Okay, ma'am.
Okay, welcome everyone to our call our council meeting to word if we could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call Kate. Here. Here. She's, yeah, she's, she signals, she's there.
Beach is here. There you have it.
All right, thank you. All right, so first up is our audience of citizens, if anyone wants to address the council on anything on our agenda, or anything else that you want to talk to us about now would be the time. And we have Donna Bovee signed up, so. Yes. Sure. Yeah, sure.
Hi all.
Hi.
My name is Capiodano Moss, I live at eighty Bransigey Lane, I'm here in town. And the reason I'm here tonight is we had a meeting on April eighteenth. I was not in attendance, but I did write a letter to the police commission regarding issues we've been having on Bransigey Lane and the cul-de-sac at the top of Centarelli Field. We've had ongoing speeding issues up and down the street. I've resided on Bransigey for over twenty-five years, and we've had issues in the past with speeding and loitering. But the present problem is far more significant. I walk my dogs several times a day up and around the cul-de-sac, and there are frequent cars parked up at Centarelli Field, containing people, often teenagers, some of them are high school students, vaping, doing drugs, dealing drugs, having sex, littering, and evidence of these behaviors has found strewn throughout the parking lot at the top of the road. With the lovely addition, this used red condom hanging off of a tree, that was pretty, especially since the softball players and the kids are going up to the park. And the town has been great, they've come in, they've put two trash cans in, they've put signs up about loitering when we've called, but the problem continues, and we have young children now living on the street, so it's definitely concerned. They speed up and down the road. I have had the police come to my house to file a formal complaint, as well as many, many phone calls. When I'm witnessing these behaviors, unfortunately, usually by the time the police get around to rolling up there, the party has gone, so. So while I really fully realize there's a shortage of officers in town, and comparatively, that's not, you know, prime screen, it's the three of the century, it's really awful, and it's gotten significantly worse. We'd like to request possibly maybe some much better lighting, cameras, or maybe just find the sensor's camera. I don't know if we could do that, but to discourage the legal activities that are taking place up the street. It's really getting beyond control, and it's creating issues for all the neighbors in the area. And if you guys don't mind, I'll use this, this is from our other neighbor who could not be here tonight, Chris and Mary Johnson, sixty-nine Bransigey. I have a definite concern regarding the speeding cars that go up and down our dead-end street from the softball game, patrons to the young high school speeders who put the pedal to the metal up and down the road, looking for their friends to hang out in the parking lot or the high school parking lot. There's foot traffic in the neighborhood such as people walking, some with kids or dogs, or kids on bikes. I've personally had a car right on my bumper many times when I'm trying to pull in my driveway from parents dropping their kid off at the end of the road in softball. Not sure what the solution is, but there is a speed limit sign that does not deter drivers. Maybe they're going too fast to see it. Thank you for your time, Chris and Mary.
Thank you. Yes.
Good evening, Mayor Kozinski and Town Council members. My name is Christie Sullivan, I live with my husband Tim on the corner of Woodbine Court and Bransigey Lane. Both are dead-end roads. You've lived there for over thirty-five years. The reason I am here is to request a light be installed in the parking lot at the top of Bransigey Lane. It is an area where bad things are happening on a regular basis, especially after dark. There's a great deal of drug and sexual activity going on up there. I have witnessed it firsthand on many occasions, too many to count. The offenders do not care that they are seen, they are very bold and very daring. Drug transactions are very common in the parking lot at the top of Bransigey. A car goes up, turns off the lights, and waits for others to come up to do their business. You will see a car go up, a few minutes later come back down, then another two or three cars will do the same. Eventually, the initial car leaves and the activity ceases for the time being. In the evening, if you head in that direction, as many dogs, as many do walking their dogs, you can be on top of a darkened car before you know it, because it's pitch black, there are no lights anywhere. It is very scary and dangerous, because you don't know who is in the car, how many are in the car, what they are doing, and if they are armed. It has forced us to go in the opposite, opposite direction once the sun goes down. It is just wrong that we have to adapt due to irresponsible even, and even criminal activity in our own neighborhood. The parking lot is surrounded by homes, a children's park, a softball field, with the high school just yards away. None of that in any way deters these people and their activities. We should be able to feel safe in our own neighborhood. There are at least twelve young children on Bransigey Lane alone. They are outside playing and riding bikes, others enjoy walking their dogs or walking with friends. We have dealt with people flying, and I mean flying, up to the top of Bransigey with no regard for anyone or anything. It has only gotten worse in the last couple of years. If you try to have them slow down, they ignore you, flip you off, or call you disgusting names. Chief McNally and the Berlin PD have really tried to help with additional patrolling and signage, which we very much appreciate. But the bad activity continues. We call dispatch when we see this as recommended, but by the time PD gets there, the cars are usually long gone. I can go on and on, but I will just say that I feel a light in the parking lot and a camera too, if possible, would greatly discourage this type of activity that is going on up there on a consistent basis, and would in turn cut back on the number of cars racing up and down Bransigey. We would like to feel safe walking our streets anytime, day or night. Right now, that is not possible. Please help us reclaim our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
I do have a quick one from another neighbor that couldn't make it.
Sure.
She's at one-twenty-three Bransigey Lane, they're Nick and Lori Hotfeld. They said they lived at one-twenty-three Bransigey Lane. They've raised their family there, they lived there for many decades, it's a tight-knit community. We were beyond shocked that when the sense of security disappeared with the rash of car thefts and break-ins, and the mischief at the end of these past few years. Notably, this past Easter morning, when our house was egged by people that, that really sent us into a scare. We hope you can convene to agree that this has to stop and put security measures in place to keep our neighborhood safe. Thank you for your time and efforts, Lori and Nick Hotfeld. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello.
Hey there, my name is Rachel Jennings, and I am also resident on Bransigey Lane, I live at one-oh-six. I've actually grown up on Bransigey Lane, forty, and my grandmother owned a house at one-eighteen. My mother then took that house over, she lives at one-eighteen. I bought the Tieron Zoney House back in twenty-twenty, I'm at one-oh-six, so we have a tight-knit community here already. I've seen the street transition from like, quiet, calm, small, very few houses, to a brash of illegal activity. I started making phone calls, I'm sure the police know me on a first-name basis. I probably don't want to leave my name anymore, and I apologize, because it's kind of embarrassing. But I, I've purchased, I purchased the house back in twenty-twenty, and I'll never forget, I moved from a cut-through street to a dead end, thinking that it'd be really nice to be there. And I, like I said, I've grown up in that neighborhood. However, since this parking lot has been placed on Bransigey Lane, in where Centarelli Field is, we've noticed that, you know, there's been, because it's so strategically placed, there's no lighting in that area. And what I've experienced, and what I know from the work that I do, is if, you know, there, there is human trafficking going around. I see it, I've seen it, I mean, I, I can't personally identify and call it in, because by the time someone gets there, it, it's over, I work with children and families, so I am involved in that. So the thing is, is that the police have said, you know, if you need us, please call us, but I, you can't expect the police to sit there all day, every day. You know, this, this street has really become a bed of illegal activity, like I had stated. But even when I bring my kids up there, they're very young, four, five, and, and ten years old. They'll ask me, what are these things on the ground? There's drugs, paraphernalia on the ground, we see condoms. And I notice that, you know, when these girls go and walk up the street, they'll be, have someone sitting up there, and then another, another car comes, you can watch it, it's just, it's very apparent. It's actually disgusting and scary at the same time that I have to witness this. Luckily, I'm home the majority of the time, because my job allows me to be. But I think what's scary is that this just continues in broad daylight and at night. At night is the worst time, because there are no, there are no lights there, it's a safety concern. You know, if you park up there, you're able to see cars coming, and then they can flee the scene with, without a problem. I think that a dead end is such, where we are located, really, it shouldn't, we shouldn't have these problems. So number one, obviously, the illegal activity going on, and then number two, the speeding is so bad, it's just, again, it's strategically placed. You're up at the top of the hill and you could slip. And now that the, now that the street has been widened, it gives you more, it gives, it gives you more gas to go, you know? I think that's the issue. I have formally addressed this back in, for, when we moved in, I would say in the September of twenty-twenty, I started making phone calls to the town. I made some traction last April, which should be documented. I spoke, spoke to Jen Ochoa, Parks and Rec, because I really didn't know who to go to about lighting and speed bumps and a camera. I spoke with Michael Hearn, you know, he said, you know, yeah, we'll look into it. I'd asked for barricades to barricade off the, the parking lot during the seasons where, you know, there is no baseball or softball. I've asked to put in speed bumps or a stop sign possibly at Woodbine and Bransigey. Just something to stop the, the, these activities from going on. It's just not feasible, not possible for the police to be there all of the time. So, you know, I really would appreciate it if something gets done, because it's, I, I'm not, I don't live here. I didn't move here for this purpose. I, I moved from a cut-through street for this very problem. So I, I can, I can, I'm sure you can understand where I'm coming from, but it shouldn't be happening. I've seen such a change from when I was a kid toddler to now what I'm seeing. It, it's pretty, really, the safety concern is sad, it's sad. I also have a letter from my neighbor. She is at eighty-eight Bransigey Lane, I have it on a text, I don't know, she could probably send it in.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. All right, so her letter states, "To whom it may concern, please take the concerns regarding the dangerous behaviors on Bransigey Lane and at Centarelli Field seriously. The issues with speeding have intensified as the weather has gotten warmer, and there are cars parked at the lot consistently. This is not a new issue. I personally called a previous year and requested a speed study, and I know of neighbors who have done the same as well. I have lived on Bransigey Lane for over four years, and have watched the town ignore the repeated concerns of myself and my neighbors, and have in fact watched as the town decided to widen and repave the road, exacerbating the issue and effectively turning our quiet little street into a raceway, complete with a dark and private hideaway at the end. The town has created this issue, and they have placed the burden of responsibility on the backs of the overworked police department, who have been as proactive and responsive as they can be. The town has created this issue, and they have placed the burden and responsibility on the backs of our children, who are told not to ride their bikes on the street or play in the front yard, because it isn't safe. The town created the issue, and have, they have placed the issue of responsibility on the homeowners, who have to stay vigilant constantly and have their peace interrupted. Luckily, this problem is easily fixable. Motion sensor lights, a gate for the, for when softball is not in season, a camera or speed bumps are all easy, self-sustaining, and relatively inexpensive. It's time to fix this." Megan Pellott. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the, yes, sir? Now, where are you? Good.
My name is Scott Calderon, I live on Hudson Street. My backyard is Bransigey Lane. They're the longest, fifty-nine years. I can honestly say in fifty-nine years, it's the worst it's ever been. It's a raceway. Used to be a cop here for thirty-one years. I'll tell you right now, I've estimated cars going down, excuse me, up and down Bransigey Lane at sixty to sixty-five miles an hour. If I got a penny for all the trash and garbage and crap that's left behind, I could have retired from the police department probably five years earlier. It's a problem. It's a problem because it's so dark. You have to make it unpleasant for those people that come up there to party and make our lives miserable, so they don't come here anymore. Police Department has graciously sent officers up there, but they can't be there all the time. We appreciate what they have sent. Recently, two o'clock in the morning, what, what some of the residents don't see is, like myself and Dick Yale, who lives at the end too, one o'clock, two o'clock in the morning, we have loud music, egg party going, for five or ten minutes, solo cups thrown all over the place, headlights into Dick Yale's house and driveway. It's nonsense. It's really nonsense. We have to deter that, they get unpleasant. So dark up there, it's safe haven. We put a light in the middle of the park. And I say right in the middle of the parking lot, because what you also don't see is when they come up at sixty miles an hour and start doing donuts, whether it's in the summer or in the winter, and then they go up into the grass and do donuts, tear up the lawn up there. Eventually, somebody's going to get hurt. You put a light in the middle of that parking lot, light up that whole area, and then the neighbors do what we're supposed to do, and the police department does what they're supposed to do by collaborating with each other and forming a partnership, calling when, when it's necessary. That'll deter a lot. You got to start with that light. Couple lights. Make it unpleasant for these people not to come. That's the first step. Neighborhood and the police department will collaborate, and we'll take care of the rest, but we're asking for a light.
Thank you, Scott. Yes, sir. Yep.
I'm Sullivan, six Woodbine Court.
Hey, Tim.
Tonight, we've been dealing with this for a while. I'm not going to elaborate on whatever else is spoken about. But I think the, the big issue is that this has become a destination. Why has it become a destination? Because of the darkness that everybody's talking about. I mean, sure, you have speeding everywhere in town, it's an issue. This is just a straight track, right up from Patterson Way up to the top of the hill, going south and then traveling north back. But that's going to happen, I think, in that plot. The real issue is, this has become a destination. Why has it become a destination is because it's so dark. And I hate to say it, but the town contributed. Maybe twenty years ago, fifteen years ago or so, it was just a cul-de-sac. But the town created a large parking area. If you travel south into the top, where there's a couple, cul-de-sac, there's now a large parking lot to the left. It is completely dark. It's a nuisance, the town created a nuisance at the top of the hill, it's a destination. So, I mean, there's different legal theories of negligence, et cetera. But this is a nuisance that, that the town actively created. By, by creating this parking lot and not properly lighting it. Now, at, in the, in the fall, late fall, at six o'clock at night, it's completely in the park, and you don't know what you're walking into. Granted, this time of year, it starts at the eight-thirty, nine o'clock, but kids are out till one in the morning now. Maybe it's gotten worse because of the nature of, of what's legal now, or what's perceived to be legal. But they're going to, when criminal activity or reckless activity takes place, they're going to seek the darkness at night. And they can't be both. That's what's happened, the destination. And unfortunately, I think the town participated in it becoming a destination, in creating a parking lot and not lighting it properly. Thanks.
Thank you, Tim. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
My name is Brian Carvallo, I live on one-sixty-seven Hudson Street. The entire backyard of my property borders this parking lot. And since this parking lot has been in place, situation as everyone has described thus far, is only getting worse. Won't be labor to points, but drug deals, garbage, beer cans, liquor bottles, used condoms, drug dealing going on, that is, you can, you can witness it. When a car pulls up, and it's a window-to-driver window, you see an exchange of hand going this way, this way, and then the cars take off. They're not bringing, exchanging lunches here. Everyone knows what's going on, it's not a bag from McDonald's. I think lighting was, is essential for the evening, and I don't really understand why the parking area is open after the season has ended, what the parking lot is intended for, which is to provide parking and relieve street park for the field. It's a long opening, but prior to that parking lot being input in place, to prevent people from driving on the grass, there were the concrete saddles that were there at that time, and then utility poles were placed in them, and that would assure that drivers could not drive up on the grass. That would be an inexpensive solution after the season closes, because the problem doesn't end when the summer passes. This is a problem that goes year-round. In the dead of winter, there's cars parked there in the back all the time. And Scott and I are just tired, picking up garbage that's thrown in our yards, in our properties, even though the town is, places multiple containers there, for people to put their garbage in, and people still are negligent. And I think everyone else has covered, you know, all the, all the points, I just don't want to belabor the issue. Reinforce that, this is a serious issue. And there's no way there should be that much traffic on Bransigey Lane for a quiet dead-end street, you know, that, that exists.
Thank you. Anyone else on this issue or, or any issue? Any other, yes, yes, sir.
One Al Budria, one-fifteen Skinner Road. We better look, change of pace, not talking about the speeding and everything. I'm here tonight to advocate the schools, students, and teachers, and ask Berlin voters, vote no, the BOE budget next Tuesday at referendum, and choose too low. Advisory question. School budget needs two-hundred-and-ninety thousand dollars more to meet contractual obligations. It's based on the BOE-approved budget. About this funding, the district faces losing core instructional staff, such as paraprofessionals, specialists, interventionists. Now is not the time to be losing core instructional staff, and it can be done without raising taxes. So please, next Tuesday, vote no, BOE budget, and choose too low. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on, on, on any issue? Yes, yes, please.
Hi, everyone, Imelda Mangelo, eighty-six Devonshire Way. I'm also here to talk about the Board of Education budget. First of all, thank you to the Board of Finance, and especially Raul, for recognizing the importance of staying to contractual obligations, and really trying to advocate to get us to the four-point-two-three percent. Thank you for getting us to three-point-six, but it's, we're just a tiny bit short of the four-point-two-three percent that we need in order to meet contractual obligations. I am also hopeful that at the next referendum, and by the way, thank you for printing the signs out there a little bit earlier this time, just to educate the community that there is another referendum that has to take place on Tuesday, the twenty-third. I am hopeful that at that referendum, we will get a vote of no to low for the Board of Education budget. And I appeal to the Town Council, to the Board of Finance, to squeeze just a little bit more, and hopefully get us to the two-hundred-and-ninety thousand dollars that we're short, in order to make sure that we meet contractual obligations. I understand that, and I've heard the meetings, whether in Zoom or here, that there's a lot of principles. My principle is I will not increase taxes. My principle is that I will not meet what the budget request was. I'm asking the Town Council and the Board of Finance to put those principles aside, and really think about what is most important for the town, for our students, for our education, educational system, and really look at how do we meet the contractual obligations, so that we don't lose these interventionists, these special ed teachers, and building substitutes, you know, et cetera. We're talking two-hundred-and-ninety thousand dollars, can't that be squeezed from somewhere? And I know you have a big job to try and make it all work for the town, as well as, as the Board of Education as well. But just think about what it means for the students, what it means for our educational system. These interventionists do a lot, and it's because we have them there that the rest of the students can actually have a quality education. So I also appeal to those for the referendum to vote no to low for the Board of Education budget, and Town Council, or to Finance, put your principles aside, and hopefully you can do the right thing for your town.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience of citizens for any topic, any other topic? Yeah, Donna?
Okay, so I'm here tonight representing Parks and Rec as chairperson, and I want to review our previous communications and thoughts regarding the closure of the DeMore Dinda Pool in East Berlin. There was a thoughtful letter that was posted in Facebook, had questions, obviously produced a lot of comments, a lot of misinformation. So I think it's just important to kind of review things, tell you where we are, and what our plans are going forward. So back for, for this upcoming year, two thousand twenty-four, or two thousand twenty-three summer, I did communicate back in December to the Town Council, obviously made it public, that our plan was to open Percival seven days, and DeMore Dinda Bender Pool five days, Monday through Friday, and we would not operate the waiting pool. That is the same that we did in two thousand twenty-two. We did that, that was our plan, barring any unforeseen physical issues that we had not identified at that point for the pool. The pool is an age pool, I'll get into that later, but our plan was to open that pool, assuming that we have the staff, like we did in two thousand twenty-two. I indicated that would know the situation early February, and would communicate that plan to the council. Unfortunately, of the five supervisors we had last year, we have an aquatic director, supervisor level, and then we have lifeguards, and then pool attendants. Supervisors are the main managers of the day-to-day operations of the pool. The lifeguards report into the supervisors. So assuming that we had enough staff, you know, we, we would open the pool. Of the five supervisors we had last year, one was promoted to aquatic director, he took additional training over the Over the winter and he is now our aquatic director. Two did not return due to other opportunities. These are mainly kids in college with maturity levels that are much needed for this type of position. Obviously, you know, they go to college, they get internships, they have careers, they age up. If they're teachers, they may want to stay in that type of position because, you know, it's a fairly good position for the summer. That wasn't the case for those that did not return. We communicated. At the staff continue advertising via Facebook, town website. Berlin High School morning announcements, flyers at CCSU. And of course, word of mouth. Our Berlin High School swim team, including the coaches, really promote these types of positions. And that's where the majority of the lifeguard supervisors, aquatic directors come from. And we would hope that we get the staff needed. Little over a month ago, I came again to the Town Council. To let you know that unfortunately, we were not able to hire the necessary supervisor lifeguard staff for two pools to operate two outdoor pools. No one has applied, and that's right up till today, for those supervisor positions other than the two returning of last year. Supervisors have additional training and again maturity levels to handle the tougher situations. All skills, obviously, you know, in the case of any type of significant. Pool issue, accidents, things like that. That's what we need those supervisors there for. At that time, a month ago, we concluded that we could only open one pool, that being Percival. You have two supervisors. With two pools, we would need five, which we had last year. And ideally, we'd want six. Last year, we had the five open DDB only five days per week. Supervisors are the toughest to fill. And we are hopeful that the ten lifeguards that we have this year will want to. Be future supervisors going forward. They're all around eighteen years of age. They'll be going to college. Hopefully, you know, we could take a few of those, give them additional training, and they'll become future supervisors and next year or the year thereafter. It is important that the town also posted this decision. That we made and communicated to the council on its website and on the Facebook, you know, Facebook Buzz, Berlin Buzz and Berlin Talks. I will tell you, the citizen is of no help, none whatsoever. And you hear this from a lot of people. They will not. They have not. Posted letters to the editor where we try and communicate as well. They have not. Posted any articles that we've written just to communicate decisions that are made. There there's just no help at all. So. But the town did its job. So why Percival? Why are we open Percival versus DeMordinda Bender Pool? Well, attendance at. Percival is three and a half times DeMordinda, assuming a seven day attendance at both pools. Percival's bigger and it's in much better physical shape. Still old. Will need some repairs soon, but not immediate, not in the next couple of years, but. That is why we chose Percival. For staff, like I said, we have one aquatic director. He's twenty one years old. And we hope to keep him because he's graduating with teaching degree. And has indicated that he'd like to continue this as a summer employment. We have two supervisors. They're in college and they're twenty one years of age. We have ten lifeguards. They're all in high school, three pool attendants that are sixteen years of age. We provide training in house and we pay for those returning. Obviously, there's different training for different levels. We provide lifeguard training, lifeguard training for those that are starting. But the lifeguard that has not been employed by us in the past will pay a fee and it's a hundred and thirty dollars. Lot cheaper than a lot of other towns other than New Britain, which charges fifty. That's the only town. Otherwise, it's way above a hundred and thirty. It's a it's a very good deal. So to summarize, for this summer twenty twenty three, we're not opening DeMordinda Bender Pool due to the lack of supervisory staff. Other options were presented to kids. They chose other options. COVID wasn't helpful because we lost our internal staff promotional feeding program. Start as a lifeguard, become a supervisor, go on to other things. Our pay is in line with other towns. In fact, we probably a little bit more. I want to say that too loud, but you know, just a little bit. Other towns have found themselves in similar situations. Because surrounding towns have indoor pools, they have year round staff that allows for the experience and training. And allows them them become supervisors at their outdoor pools. Attendance, twenty twenty one DeMordinda Pool had one thousand forty three. Visits to the pool and that includes the weekends. Average attendance was twenty two with some weekends and days with zero people coming to the pool. Twenty twenty two, five days per week, attendance was nine hundred and thirty one for the last summer. And again, if you add back the weekends, you know, it's averaging twenty one people per day. Percival twenty twenty two attendance was four thousand one sixty one. Visits with an average of seventy three attendees per day. So again, three and a half times of Percival versus DeMordinda. Smaller population in that area of town. But we can handle attendees that were at DeMordinda, bring them into Percival with no problem. Attendance has been declining at both pools. Although significantly in East Berlin, two thousand seventeen, three thousand fifty nine visits. Two thousand eighteen, twenty four ninety seven, two thousand nineteen, twenty three oh seven. Twenty twenty, we closed it because of COVID. We kept Percival open. Probably, you know, both Spoutsworth working, other options. We saw significant increases during COVID of people installing their own pools at their own home as well in the town. Again, back in December, when I came to the Town Council meeting, I I also, and I started out with the current physical condition of the DeMordinda Pool. We we believed at that time we could operate that pool for this year. But we knew that we have a job ahead of us to look at the physical condition, study those issues. Tang costs, understand timeline to get those parts in. Line up construction, obviously get approval from the town if the town wants to continue to have two outdoor pools. That's an option that needs to be studied and needs to be looked at. The main pool and deck requires requires major upgrades. There's cracks, stairs into the pools are warping, settling. We lose a lot of water. Staff has attempted to clock and repair and patch, but it's very significant. A new liner. Is needed for the pool and plaster repaired. The decking is sinking because some water is leaking into under the gutters, going under the decking. So there's some sinkage there. Again, it's it's not to the point where there are safety concerns, but. You got to fix the pool. So we were gonna open it if we had the staff. But we need to all understand there are significant issues with that pool. Should we decide to open it in the future because we'll have, you know, hopefully staff. We don't know of any underground pipe issues, but we need to look at that. We know that we're losing, you know, five inches of water per day. The waiting pool has not been open since two thousand nineteen. We really haven't had any negative feedback on that. There's severe chipping of the paint coping is poor shape. Requires restoration before we could even consider opening that. And again, no pushback on that decision. The entire complex is not ADA compliant. Pools, bathhouse, decking and entrance. And again, Percival has that same issue. Capital dollars, we've had dollars in the budget. They are placeholders with no estimate of the costs because we haven't gone out to bid yet on anything. But we did have two hundred and fifty thousand in the capital plan for a pool liner at DeMordinda for many years in the past. In this past November, there was discussion from the town that, you know, funds may be available. That was in October, November. For us. Get that fixed. And, you know, order it, get people lined up. It's too tight. We wouldn't have been able to op open the pool. This year had we had the staff. So what we said is rather than spend the money. But, you know, let's not even think about doing it because we're probably not going to be able to get it done for the summer. And let's take a look at it and. And, you know, open the pool if the staff. Is there and then we'll study on the physical costs. As we all know, capital, you know, and for all areas is pushed out. Currently in our capital list, we have three hundred thousand in the two thousand twenty four pool. Plan for pool liner at DDB, seven fifty for the pool and bathhouses of Percival. Or and DDB each. In twenty twenty five and twenty twenty six for ADA compliance and then a hundred and fifty grand. Or significant maintenance, twenty twenty five, twenty twenty seven. You know, just a thought, it doesn't make sense to upgrade. The eight to ADA compliance unless you're going to make a long term commitment to open both pools. Those are placeholders. Really don't know, you know, how much all of that will cost. We need to realize the past repairs have not been significant. This town has not spent a lot of money on repairs. We do our own maintenance for the most part. We'll need capital dollars, whatever option is chosen. And it will cost town. Dollars to close a pool. If the decision is ever made to close one or. Either pool. There's shutdown costs for the pool and it can be significant. In considering options, the commission and the staff would like to hear from residents, especially those of East Berlin. On their thoughts on usage of the complex area. We have, we've scheduled our October meeting at Hubbard School for an open forum. We decided to hear from people after the summer because now you feel the effects of closing down the pool. It'll be fresh in people's mind. People are back. You know, to school at that point in time. And and again, this is to help all of us make a good decision. You make recommendations to the council, Board of Finance gets involved. They all try and make the right decisions. We need input. Some options that we've all discussed at various meetings. You know, we could keep the pool as is and confirm the cost to repair, including the waiting pool. Hope that you have the staff available. And we should look at usage of the pools too, because maybe the dollars can be spent on other options. If we don't need two outdoor pools. So an option is close a pool replaced with a splash pad. Splash pad you can operate without any people. People go up, push the button, water comes out. Spend money on water. Skate park. Turn into additional pickleball courts, which we have two. You know, all those costs will have to identify as as we consider things. Splash pads are very popular. The issue in the area of the DeMordinda complex, though, is that we do not have significant parking. For splash pads, you need a lot of parking because parents are coming with mainly younger children. And they're parking and going there. Normally splash pads are put near playgrounds as well. There is a couple swings there and Grove Park is nearby, but the parking there is not adequate for splash pads. So there's dollars there. So I know that's a lot of information. I appreciate your patience, especially with everything else going on. But I, in closing, I want to make it very clear, we we the commission welcome input from the community. Please contact any Park and Rec Commissioner, including myself, at any time to discuss any issue. Our numbers, they're on the website, if not Donna Bovee. And you can look me up. You'll get my number. Unfortunately, people don't attend meetings. We had no one come to any of our Parks and Rec meeting, and I don't think anyone really came to the council meeting. To express any displeasure in our thoughts. I'm sure people aren't happy that the pools closed, but. No one came to our meeting. There was, again, that thoughtful letter that was posted on social media. And I hope I have answered all the questions and I will follow up with that person. After tonight's meeting, but I thought it was more important to get it out in the public. With significant and constructive input from residents, our commission and staff will make better recommendations for the council. Takes a village, no pun intended. The Park and Rec Commission meets second Thursday of each month. And please attend or zoom in and ask questions.
Thank you, Donna.
I don't know. You guys have any questions? You look at that or?
Yes, thank you. Appreciate the input. Okay, yeah, still our audience of citizens. Anyone else wishes to speak and on Zoom too? I don't want to forget about those folks. Is there anybody? Raising their hands there. I don't. See anybody? Okay, so we'll go ahead and close the. The public, the audience of citizens and. Or on to the mayor's update. Well. Just very briefly, I just, I just, I just want to mention one thing about the the Board of Ed budget. Obviously, the referendum is coming up. Please go out and vote. I know there's two different budgets that were submitted, just just for the record. The superintendent's budget was a three point four eight percent contractual obligations figure. The suggested increase to the board of that is three point six percent, which is above the contractual obligations. Just as an example, last year, I believe the contractual obligations were, I want to say around three point three, three point four. The budget increased last year to the Board of Ed was two point five percent. They still had a half a million dollar surplus. That was last year. I understand this is this year. The three point six percent is the biggest increase we've given the Board of Ed in probably fifteen years. And over the last few years, we have increased the budget to where the per pupil spending, which is how the federal government and the state government measures. Funding to school systems around around the country and here in the state as well. Per pupil spending is a little over twenty thousand per pupil. And that is higher than Glastonbury, Rocky Hill, Cromwell, Newington, all the towns around us, Suddington. So, you know, we've we paid. Meticulous attention to the Board of Ed. And, you know, I think we funded them very fairly and properly over the last few years, hence the rise in the per pupil spending. So just some facts I just wanted to throw out there. I understand there was a Board of Ed budget which was higher, which has never happened and. I I don't know. Last time certainly not while I've been on the council, but even looking back past that. The Board of Ed has never increased what the with the superintendent's budget requested. So that's, you know, a little bit different this year as well. So. Anyway, that's out there. Please go vote at the referendum. Vote your your conscience and what you think is right. So appreciate that. So with that, we'll move on. We're just going to go through the consent agenda very quickly. And then actually, what I'd like to do is we'll just move. We have the issue on Brandigie Lane is we have it second on our agenda. If you wouldn't mind, Joe, I know you're first. But I'm just gonna, I'm gonna, we'll make a motion to move that that up. But let me just run through the consent agenda. We'll get that out of the way. And which should only take a minute or two. And then we have Steve Wilson, our police commissioner. Chairman, and we have our chief and deputy chief here as well. And and they certainly want to contribute to this discussion as and we appreciate them being here. So consent agenda very quickly. Of course, it would be a long one tonight. As as always, it's usually five items. We have fourteen tonight. I am not going to read through all these items. I don't, I don't, I don't. Yeah, so council members, we obviously have this before us, you know, a few days before. I know we've all read them. So if everyone is happy with our consent agenda, we will go ahead and take a motion to approve our consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda as a presented in our.
Thank you. Second on that?
A second.
Any other comments or questions from the council? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so moved. So if we could just make a motion to move topic two. Up to topic one.
I would like to make a motion to move. Topic two on our agenda to topic one.
All right, thank you. Second on that?
Second.
Any comments or questions? Hearing none? All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Right, so moved. Thank you. So, so. How do we want to start on this topic? We and before, so thank all of you for coming. We appreciate those comments. Very sorry to hear what is happening there. Used to play with with Scott's brother growing up and we'd go there and play in the fields and all that. It was a wonderful place to go and enjoy as as youngsters. So it's horrible to hear what has occurred. Enjoy as as youngsters. So I'm I'm it's horrible to hear what has occurred. I know we'll be able to fix it with all of us getting together. But anyway, so.
The chair of the police commission has requested to address the council.
Yes, sir. Come on up, Steve.
Steve Wilson.
Thanks for being here. I know you guys are working on it too.
Uh Steve Wilson, I'm the chair of the police commission. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Town Council for putting this on the agenda, and thank you to the area residents for coming out a second night to talk about this. Uh at our police commission meeting last month, we had almost twenty residents of the area come in and. Went to great detail about an issue that the chief and the deputy chief and I are aware of, but we we didn't know the extent of it. Tim Sullivan hit a great point, though. This was a very quiet suburban neighborhood. Town, very well intentioned, added a baseball field on one side of the street and a uh. Parking lot, maybe thirty five or forty spaces on the other side of the street. Which just ended up in a very obscure location and it's dark and just like a rodent finds a hole in a wall. Uh bad people eventually find dark places like that where they're out of sight and there's no lighting and everything. And that's that's what's happening. And I don't think anyone in Berlin should put up with this kind of an impact on the quality of their life. It's terrible. And uh and some of the people that have complained have had their houses vandalized. So it's it's going to keep escalating until we stop it. We've increased our patrols. We have a couple other things we're going to do that I won't discuss in a public forum. But there's some things we need the town to help us with that we're powerless. Every every speeding complaint, and I get. Twenty of those a month. Everyone thinks everyone drives too fast on our street. Everybody wants speed bumps. I've never come to you guys and asked for speed bumps on a street, but I want them on this street, at least two of them. Residents are okay with it. Uh we have to make sure the snowplow guys are okay with it. But I'd like to see those out there as soon as we can. Uh I do think we need some kind of lighting and I do think it needs to be right in the center of that uh parking lot. It's motion activated. I'm not an expert on these things. LED directional motion activated or something to discourage. Uh the loitering and the criminal behavior that's that's gone on with that. And and I'd like to request that these things, I don't know if that's the highway department or if that's their. Area, but that these are done on an expedited basis, the the study, the research. We know the problem. It's the solution we have to come up with, and it should be done as quick as possible. These folks shouldn't go through another summer uh like they have. Appreciate you you folks coming out here and making us aware of it. Obviously. We we have problems all over town. Uh but but this one, this one's very concentrated. And I think it's very fixable. And uh. The speed bumps won't solve the whole problem. The lights won't solve the whole problem. Police department won't solve the whole problem. But I think if we if we do these things as quick as we can and as uh diligently and fastidiously as we can. And we can take away seventy or eighty percent of the problem. We're going to start a community watch or boost up the community watch. Organization there, but um. I hate the thought that our fellow residents are are. Healing with this at one o'clock, two o'clock, three o'clock. It's terrible. I would just, I would just ask that this is a top priority. Well, the bureaucracy doesn't always move fast, but um speed bumps and the light, you gotta do it as quick as we can. Steve, did you want to add anything?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Steve. Appreciate it.
I know.
Yeah.
Good evening, everybody. Um as uh sit in the back of room and listen to all of your concerns and believe me. We are more than uh willing to try and do anything we can in that neighborhood as well. Some of the other neighborhoods, we're getting very similar concerns, some other neighborhoods too. We've uh Chairman Wilson was smart not to give out our tactical plan. Uh because it's kind of hard to have a big tactical plan when you have such a small police department. But we're working on that too. So fortunately, we're able to. Um start two more on Thursday for an academy, so maybe we'll see some more police officers this time next year. I believe in being a realist. We will uh continue our patrols in that neighborhood, the speed bumps. I don't know if you want to do permanent ones, you want to do temporary ones. Uh I I travel a lot and I've seen both. Maybe um more like the speed table, like that's in front of the high school itself versus the speed bump. The plow guys might like that better. It's not that short pump. It's a little bit longer. We will uh deploy some. Non-normal patrol tactics in the neighborhood during the nighttime hours and see what we can do. Our problem is. Is uh we can go out there and sit out there all night and tonight's not the night. And then tomorrow night's night and we happen to have every one of our officers tied up. Um it's not uncommon with the the crime rate. Climbing throughout the community, not just here in Berlin, but across the state and across the country, that these quality of life issues are rising up. They're becoming more uh. Emboldened, brazen. And um young people that are involved in a lot of these things understand that there's really a limited number of consequences. So even though we can take action, consequences uh not. Would say we'd had even twenty years ago. It was up to me. I caught some of the local kids there. You know what? They'd be cleaning those condoms and uh scrubbing that driveway and digging that stuff. I said the same thing just last Thursday night to uh. He parks in rec commission and they were kind of surprised at what I had to say, but we can't even do that with our young people anymore. There is so much that happens with juvenile offenders that even when you go to the juvenile review boards and stuff like that, it's they're very limited on what they can do because, you know. Their brains aren't fully developed until they're twenty five and now maybe even thirty. So uh you know, it's something that it gets under my skin. I know um. We can stand here all night and say we're doing the best we can, but it is falling short. So I definitely think lighting would be a big help up there.
Was there? So is there's never been lighting there ever? Even when they first put in the parking lot or anything? It didn't fall apart or anything? There's never been any? Okay. At at the, yeah, I know the street. Yeah. Okay.
You know, this problem didn't just happen this week or anything.
Sure.
Going for a while. I started going up there and eating lunch during the day to watch what's happening in the winter time. With the activity of the kids that come out of the high school and all the schools pretty well locked down. The kids really aren't coming out of the high school. What we're seeing also is we have caught some juveniles in recent weeks late at night. And I'm from Berlin. We picked up a kid from Fairfield. Hmm. A stolen car, of course. Mommy and daddy came and got it because you can't hold it for eight hours. So um they're not just coming from out there. You are right about one thing, though. It is the, it's the destination. You said it was a destination. It's become a destination. So. We we need to make it not a destination, a place that not comfortable. But the sad thing is. There's a theory called displacement theories. We'll push them out of that neighborhood and they'll go to somebody else's neighborhood. They like to come to Berlin. Somebody intelligence that we've gotten from some of the people that are breaking into our cars and trying to steal cars and doing the smash and grab. Uh larcenies. They're from the cities, the urban areas, and they think Berlin is the country. Sadly, I don't think it's the country, but they think it's the country. And they say, well, we'll go out and hit the country because we know that there's not much they're going to be able to do with us. And then they scurry back to the big urban centers like Hartford. Uh New Haven, Richwood, Danbury. Seeing all the activity all over the state. They're mobile. They know that the police are limited in our responses. Um but we'll do what we can.
Okay, chief, I appreciate that. Um so. Yeah, no, I'm glad you certainly brought it to our attention and uh we can take some steps. So we'll have to figure out. What what the, you know, the lighting, I don't think that's going to be an issue. And the speed bumps, whatever speed bumps, those are the two issues, at least the probably the fastest things we could do. Um I've seen other streets and other communities that have issues like that, they put up some barriers to that make it a little more difficult, maybe at the top of the street to. Get away quickly. Uh you know, some of the Jersey barriers shortened ones. I I don't know, you know, we could, we could come up with a. With a plan to for the town to do that part of it, which would be obviously, I guess, public works, right? Have to help with the lighting. What do you think of Roche?
I would think we'll get public works and PD together.
Yeah.
Come up with a plan because you know, other regulatory agencies, you might have to get approval from lighting and all that, but. Would it be appropriate to have a motion to direct the public works and the PD to come up with a plan and a cost estimate as rapidly as possible because. They come up with a plan, they come here and then we say, well, how much will it cost? And they gotta go get estimates and I'd like to see the thing packaged and backed up as quickly as possible.
You just said it. You don't have to.
Okay.
Question?
Yes.
I don't, I don't know if it's an option or not. I haven't been up there to to see it, but is it possible to even put um a gate at the parking lot where. You know, when games are going on or whatnot, you have the gate open once the games are over. You know, to close it as some type of a deterrent, whether or not they're going to try and open it, I don't know, but. You know, the the more effort it takes for them.
Sure.
You know, the the maybe the less they'll they'll do it.
Whatever work, see, yes.
A little tricky with the design. Was it called the?
I know, okay. Wrath of Kate. Got to come up. You got to come up, Steve. I'm sorry. Got to come up. Yeah, I'm sorry. Kate, Kate, Kate is the gatekeeper on that. Yeah. Maybe we should put Kate up there on the cul-de-sac. That would be no problems up there. All right. Yeah. Yes, I'm sorry, Steve, sorry.
The the shape, the shape of that.
That's an odd shape up there. Yeah.
Tried to look where we could put yours barrier.
Yeah.
All that. And it's just, again, not my.
Yeah.
Idea of period denial is razor wire and claymore mines.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know how you do it in a residential area.
Right, right.
But I I'm sure the highway department guys do. But you know, it's just a couple hundred yards away is the actual parking lot of the high school.
Right, I know, yeah.
Lit.
Yeah.
Surveillance.
Yeah.
No problems.
Right.
This is the closest. I know the the problem will move around, but this is the closest.
To there.
Unlit lot.
Easy to find, yeah.
The high school, so it's going to be the first stop for that behavior.
Sure. And they found it, obviously.
Yeah.
And they like it. So I'll have to make them dislike it. Um so, yeah, so we will uh we will work on that. Arroche is quickly probably a number one priority. Uh to get public works together, perhaps with with the with the police department, police commission. And get something back to us as quick as possible. The lighting and cer- certainly the lighting and the speed bump seem to be the. Fastest thing we could do and look at whatever else works up there, whatever we can do to block access to that. Um it so in in the summer, it's not. Is it you, there's nobody, I mean, used as far as the the baseball fields or what what's going on in the summer there? Not much, right? And fall? Yeah. That's right, okay. Oh, do they? Okay. All right, okay. Yeah, okay.
Maybe we should look at cameras also.
Yeah. No, okay, okay. So, yeah, no, I I agree, Peter, cameras too. We'll certainly look at the camera um angle too, to see what uh what we can do with cameras there. Yeah, no, well, I'm, you know, glad we. I'm glad you folks all came. Uh thanking to the uh chairman, Steve, and and chief and deputy chief for being here and all you folks for being here and bringing that problem forward so we can expedite it and uh we'll we'll look at the lighting cameras and uh. Uh what type of barriers, be it barriers and or speed bumps for now, and then we'll, maybe there's more we could do too as we study it. Quickly, quickly as possible, yeah. Thank you, folks. The place was like nobody was ever up there, right? What's that? Yeah, right, 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 right. That place was always, nobody really went up there, you know, back in the day. Nobody really was there. We used to play up there all the time in the field, you know, on the fields on the side. So that was my little thing.
Maybe we take ten sitting up there.
Anyway.
We ready, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Counsel?
Yes.
All right, so uh let's move on to the new agenda item number two. To the transfer of title and ground lease execution of parcels of land. Comprised Knights of Columbus development located in one forty three Percival Avenue. Uh we have with us, obviously, Mr. Joe Bajowski, but also Mary Phelan from Pullman Calmly. Um to explain the deal, the structure. It's a little bit complex.
Mm-hmm.
But I thought when we had the conference call with Pullman Calmly, Mary read it. And we were able to understand it. So I thought, what better way to do it than to bring her boxer and bring her here? Uh there is a write-up that uh was sent to you prior to the meeting. Hopefully you had a chance to read it. The diagram that shows arrows going back and forth, but I I think for why. Confuse everyone else, I'll let um you want to say anything, Joe, at the beginning or?
Then thank you, thank you, folks, for for waiting while we handle that. Um appreciate that. So, hey, Joe.
So, honor roll members of the council, Mr. Mayor, um I stand here before you today. Uh with thirty four million dollars sitting in an escrow account of Wells Fargo Statutory Trust.
Is it true, Joe? Joe, it's been a long time, man. I'll tell you, it's great. It's great to hear.
So um in addition to that, the housing authority has passed the bond resolution uh last at our last meeting. Marie Phelan's on board. Her letter is signed and executed and ready to go. Um so all the pieces are in place to kind of get the money from point A to point B and start breaking ground on this project. I'm here tonight um to request all those items in the motions or the motions that are in front of you. Um I brought along Mr. Capelletti from Northeast redevelopment. If you had any questions relating specifically to the development and also the funding sources. And I brought along Marie Phelan so she could uh address any questions you might have about the deal. This seems very complex and convoluted, but in order to comply with the federal tax codes, we got to do some things. So um.
Sure.
You know, it probably wouldn't be similar to a normal housing development, but. It's in full comportment with the federal regulations and also the state regulations with respect to court housing. So that being said, I. You guys have any questions? We'll be here ready to answer them.
All right. Um do we just want to get a thumbnail sketch of uh?
I think that'll be good, Marie.
Yeah, just just.
Give a.
Quick, quick.
I know it, but you do a better job. And I don't want to show you those thunder here.
No. Yes.
I'm Marie Phelan. I'm with Pullman and Calmly.
Welcome. Thank you for being here.
I'm Marie Phelan. I'm with Pullman and Calmly and I design councilwork all over the state. Um I think we're your bound council actually.
Right, that's right. Yes, yeah.
Um. Each housing deal um are very different from your general application uh that you're normally um used to doing. Um there. The housing authority will issue the bond. Um the bonds are issued under trust indenture, which is a contract between the housing authority and the trustee normally with banks. You haven't hired them yet, so. They do all that indentures. Um. They'll sell those bonds to. Wells Fargo. Um Wells Fargo will pay the housing authority, but the money will go not to the housing authority. It'll go to. U S bank to be held for their trust indenture. That's kind of the way that those bonds are secured. They're secured under the indenture. The proceeds, the thirty four million dollars will be loaned to the owner. Of the project, who will win affordable housing. Um pursuant to a loan agreement. And then that loan agreement will be secured by a mortgage on the property by it, by the um assignment of the grants and. For the project. Those then that are signed to the trustee, trustee acts for the benefit of the bond of the which is. Wells Fargo. Um in order for the money to be spent, uh the land affordable will need to um present to the trustee. If the the housing authority will be out of it then, will present to the trustee of requisition. Um usually back, I'm just actually drafting the indenture right now. Back with um receipts or invoices from. From the vendors that are doing the construction. Um and then that, and then the money gets released to the one affordable to pay for those. Construction. So it's all.
It's packaged, yes. Well.
It's complicated.
Yes, we. Yes, we see that.
There's also.
Yeah.
Um. So Wells Fargo is secured if anything happens.
Right. Um, okay, qu- questions, anybody from the council questions? And Jeff, if you wanna weigh in too, if there's anything before we, anything else to add?
Well, the big, the big difference between what's being uh proposed now and what had been previously proposed. Is the housing authority had previously asked that the council approve the conveyance of title to the property. And execution of the ground lease prior to the financing closing. And you'll note in the resolutions tonight that that's changed, that the conveyance of the property and the execution of the ground lease only happen. If there's a closing on the financing, it happened at the same time. And, you know, we had been asking for probably eight or nine months for. Proof of financing because the town didn't wanna be in a position where we conveyed title to a piece of property. There was talk about a reverter, we didn't think it was realistic to expect a mortgagee. To subordinate to a reversion under those circumstances of its collateral, so. The current structure of the deal is dramatically different than it was before, and so the concern about if they never close. What happens to our land is is mitigated, there still will need to be in the deed. When uh the closing occurs, there still will need to be reversion language so that if the property is not used. For elderly housing at some point, then uh but that's a different story for a lender. Than just an outright reversion if they don't.
Right.
Construct by a certain date. Um, so that's, you know, that's, that's. The change that makes this all doable from my perspective.
Okay. Appreciate that, so timeframe on all this occurring, do we have any type of uh timeframe?
Actually.
Estimate, I, just an estimate, I get it, but.
Well, we just got an email.
Yeah.
This evening.
Yeah.
Wells Fargo, but I've started.
Okay, yeah. Oh, well, hallelujah, that's, that's uh, that's great to hear. Yes, no, I know, oh. Oh, yes, we know that very well, uh, through the years of this project, believe me, we know, so, but but that's great that we're headed in that. Uh, direction.
Everything.
Yep, yeah, sure, yeah.
Do, do you have any concerns about Wells Fargo? Well, with their history?
Oh. No, I mean, they're really just lenders, so.
Yeah, I I think the part is the money's gonna be transferred into an escrow account with the US. Money will be transferred into an escrow with the US bank. So.
Trust, yeah, it's a trust, yeah. Yeah, the money's going away from that, so.
Now, I think the other piece is, uh, Joe, you had mentioned that you might not need the full amount. Because you're going after some tax credits and some loans that might reduce the amount that you might tap into.
Yes, um, the thirty-four million is not the final cost of this project. Um, when we priced this project, it was at the height. These shortages are going on in the construction industry, so. The price inflation is reflected in that thirty-four million dollars. Additionally, um, you know, as we go out to bid, we'll get. Hard numbers instead of estimates, so we anticipate that cost to come down somewhat. Uh, on top of that, we are still pursuing other financing. Um, we have not foreclosed the possibility of a federal um low income housing tax credit. Uh, and that's why this deal is structured in the way it is, so that it'll allow us to take advantage of that if we choose to go in that direction. Um, we'll see what our options are for permanent financing coming down the road, uh, three years from now, see what the interest rates are. Interest rates we're getting are very attractive right now, so we might just keep it and turn it over and finance. Additionally, there's other grant opportunities and things that we are gonna be pursuing, so at the end of the day, we'll pay down. Boss of that project, um, hoping we have about ten or fifteen million dollars. On project. Solid.
Okay. Okay.
As you pay down.
Okay, gotcha. Okay. Um, okay, other questions, anyone? Donna, Donna and Donna, Donna and Donna out in Zoom land, um, anything from you guys? We're good?
I just want.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm, Mark, I, I'm good, I'm um, I just left the Capitol and uh they let us out early. Uh, I'm very excited, just wanna make a mention of this, this is almost unbelievable. So I am thrilled that this is happening, and I will see people shortly, thank you.
Thank you, Donna, yes.
Alright, so I just wanted to touch base, um, the site plan is an age restricted site plan, um, I believe. It discussed way back when about deed restriction, the site is an age restricted property. Uh, some of the changes you're making through the motions tonight also reflect uh changes in the age thirty G.
Hmm.
Um, you know, sixty percent of very median income as opposed to fifty, that's in the original option agreement, that's just done as a housekeeping measure. Changes in the regulations, so um, I think that's pretty much it, the number of units we're increasing, you know, based on changes to the HVAC. Allow us to actually increase.
To fifty-two?
Well, fifty-one or fifty-two.
I'm not sure, yeah, okay, yeah, that's great.
So we'll squeeze a couple more out.
Excellent.
Uh, and, you know, upon closing, I'm gonna have Larrero, our engineer firm, start the phase two environmentals. On the Knights of Columbus building, so they should be able to, you know, include the phase two rather. Rather short order and we can go to demolition shortly thereafter. I will be back in front of you guys um with respect to a cooperation agreement. It's the last cooperation agreement, I think, it's to nineteen eighty-four, we'll need to make some changes from.
Some things have changed since nineteen eighty-four, I would imagine, yeah, just a couple of things, yeah.
You've not, you've not seen the last of me.
Yeah, alright, alright, so, good, we're all good, go ahead and uh make some motions here.
Move that the town council authorize the town manager to execute documents, facilitate transfer of title and ground lease execution. For parcels of land at one forty-three Percival Avenue and Zero Carbolane, currently known as the Knights of Columbus property. And temporaneous with the closing of the financing.
Second on that? Thank you. Any other comments or questions on this? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Posed?
Aye.
Alright, so, so moved, uh, number two.
Move that the town council authorizes the transfer of title and ground lease execution for both parcels of land from the town. Of Berlin to the Berlin Housing Authority for the purpose of constructing up to fifty-two units of age restricted affordable housing. And provide affordable housing options for seniors, contemporary, contemporaneous with the closing of financing.
Thank you, second on that?
Second.
Thank you, CND, any other questions or comments on this motion? Hearing none, vote on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed? Alright, so moved.
Move that the town council authorizes the Berlin Housing Authority to sublease both parcels of land. Of Berlin Affordable Housing Incorporated, subject to the restrictions of the lease between the town and the authority.
Second on that?
Second.
Thank you, any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed? Alright, so moved.
Aye.
Move that paragraph eight, subparagraph D of the modified and restated option agreement. Be modified to change not more than fifty units, to not more than fifty-two units, and incomes less than fifty percent. To incomes less than sixty percent. The purpose of this change to reflect the increase in units. And being the affordable formula in line with section eight dash thirty G of the Connecticut General Statutes.
Second on that?
Second.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed? And so moved, and one more, number five.
Move to authorize the town manager to extend the modified and restated option agreement between the town of Berlin and the Berlin Housing Authority. The date of closing of financing and transfer of title, ground lease execution, no later than August sixteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Second?
Second.
You, uh, any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Posed? Alright, so moved. Alright, folks.
Feel like we should broke confetti or something.
Let's wait for the fi- wait, let's wait for the financing to uh be set. Yeah, let's, yeah, shovel the ground, let's wait for that. I, we get that part, believe me, that's so, wow, good. Well, thank you all for being here and working on this and uh, we'll uh see, see you soon.
Alright, let's uh.
Moving on.
With other items?
Oof, okay, we're only on number.
Item number three, this is a request for fee waiver, uh, Berlin Lions Club. So normally this goes on consent agenda, I I pulled this out, um, because it's not a couple of hundred dollars, it's, you know, six thousand four hundred and ninety-five.
Hmm.
And um, you know, there are some, I mean, I, we wave things like police overtime and. These like this that actually require people to do something versus an application fee. So, um, you know, Frank's available uh online as well, that. That I want to have a conversation with the council to see if we should be thinking about capping it, because. You know, we look back at the, going back, there was another big one for the churches.
Hmm.
Twenty-seven thousand dollars we waived, right, and it's real money, it says two thousand eighteen or something, right? So, um, there are ways we can do it, we can go up to a thousand dollars and then ask them to pay. Anything above that, uh, I just wanna get your thoughts, reaction to it, um, because budgets are tight, right? I mean, it's uh, you know, money we are waving and and some of these entities bring in a lot of money. Uh, and and they do give to other charities too, but here we are talking about the, so. So I I just wanna plant the seed, um, get your thoughts, reaction to it, and see where you wanna go with this and.
Uh.
You wanna.
I don't know, uh, it's a large fee. Uh.
Yes, it's, I, it's a large fee, but it's not a lot of expense for the town to administrate the inspections. Um, and the Berlin Lions Club is a nonprofit that donates, as I understand. All of the revenue from its fair back in the community. And uh, I, I'm in favor of waiving, I'm usually not in favor of waiving fees like this, but because who the organization is. And I think the value of the building is probably actually out of pocket inflated because a lot of these buildings and work is done by members. Work is donated by members at Alliance Club, they won't actually spend that much money to build the building, so I think it's reasonable to waive this fee.
Okay, fair enough, anyone else?
Uh, so can you hear me?
Yeah, we got you, Donna.
Okay, I'm on safe drive mode, so I just, I I have to concur with what Charlie just said. I know that it sounds like it's a, and and not that it's not a lot of money, but for what they do for our community. Um, I think it's a no-brainer, and I also agree because they do a lot of this work themselves. Um, that the uh costs incurred by the town are really, um, how do I say? It's not necessarily what it's gonna, what it would cost if it was, uh, you know, a big contract, so to speak, you know, the work. And 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 some of the goods and goods and services are probably gonna be supplied by the Lions. So I I would have no issues with pushing this along, I think that, you know, they've done, just most recently. Uh, made a, a big investment uh for an art ATV for our police department, so I think. Definitely we need to, that would've cost us more money to do, if we, that alone, that piece alone, to purchase it ourselves, so. Um, I'm, I'm for this, I certainly will support this, thank you.
Alright, thank you, Donna, anyone else?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Um, you know, I I kinda look at it as well, when I first saw the the dollar figure, I'm looking at it, it's a lot of, a lot of money. Um, but as I look at what the town's request for fee waiver states. And kind of what, where they fall, um, I mean, it, they are nonprofit, uh, which contributes to the community, so they've met that. Um, you know, is there, is it a time for future discussion to maybe put a cap on something like that? Um, I do think it warrants discussion, um, maybe that's something we could put on the next agenda or two. Um, but I think in in light of that, the way that the policy is now, um, I I think they may, you know, meet the requirement. Yes, I agree, it's a lot of money, but I also agree with um, with Charlie that it's not a lot of expense on the town to administer, so.
Okay, yes.
So, the purpose of bringing this up was not to discuss this particular agenda item, I'm fine if you want to approve.
Yes, yes.
I think it it, we need to have a discussion about.
Overall discussion.
Overall, setting a number, or perhaps to say that if it's above a certain number, we pull it out of consent and bring it for your discussion. Something like that.
Yeah. Good. Yeah, that's fair.
You, you know, we are, it's it's still taxpayer money that we have.
Right.
So, um. Yes, I'm fine with approving it, but I I think we ought to do some research, think about what uh other options you have. But at least at the beginning, anything that is above, you know, getting to six on figures, we'll pull it out and bring it. For discussion so that it's not automatic.
Is it possible to find out what other town, you know, if other towns have the same type, you know, do they have caps or any, I just.
I spoke with Frank, I mean, there, it's a scale that a lot of towns use and.
Okay.
The state gives us the autonomy to fix the amount, there's a minimum statutory amount that you should charge, but it's very low.
Okay.
Um, you wanna add anything?
Anything, Jeff, do you know of other towns, or like, what do they do? And again, not, not for this particular one necessarily, but just in general.
I mean, by and large, you do see ordinances that do cap them. Um. On both sides. You know, a max. It, you know, like I wrote one in, in. In North Haven where if you spend a hundred million dollars on construction, we give you a fifty percent discount on your permit fees.
Okay.
So Amazon.
Ah, okay.
Themselves.
Okay, I got that, yeah.
Um, but then there's also caps on what you can waive.
Okay, okay, okay.
So that people don't have an expectation.
Right.
When they're building a pro forma for a deal to see if it makes sense, they don't have an expectation that you're gonna waive it.
Yeah, okay, I got you, yeah.
If you, if you put them on notice, what you, what you're willing to waive.
Yes, there's some things to consider down the road, okay, um, yeah. Alright, um, yeah, certainly with the Lions here, uh, agreed, agree with, uh, you folks have stated, and uh certainly we know they give a lot back, hence that's why we. Support them uh as a town so much, um, so uh if there's no other comments, go ahead and uh. I think we have two motions, did we take, take these two motions?
Move to approve the request of the Berlin Lions Club to waive the permit fee to demolish the pole barn at four ten Beckley Road. The total amount of fee to be waived is two hundred dollars.
Second on that?
Second.
Any other comments or questions on that? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed? Alright, so moved, and number two.
Move to approve the request of the Berlin Lions Club to waive the permit fees to construct a new cattle barn at four ten Beckley Road. The total amount of the fee to be waived is approximately six thousand four hundred and ninety-five dollars.
I was thinking, a second on that?
Second.
Uh, any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed? Alright, so moved.
Thank you. An item number four is a request from the police union to reduce the Vantage Care Retirement Health Savings contributions. They make from two percent to one percent, it says self-funded, uh, town does not participate in this. Um, they're preparing, I believe, for the higher contributions coming in pension, so the police union would like. To reduce their contributions from two to one percent, but you know, to do that, you need a motion from the town council.
Okay.
Does Vantage Care who they currently use, or is that a change as well, that's who they currently use, okay, thank you.
Okay, this is there, obviously, the, the letter here, the union request, right, that's what they, yeah, like you have read here, yeah.
Will it, will this cost us anything?
Nothing.
How can that be, Peter? Come on, no, no, that's fine then, yeah, that's uh, uh, obviously, town department. Uh, obviously, Town Department, HR is okay with it, uh, we'll get the President of the Union telling us, he's a, yeah, and and they're okay with it, so.
Then that's, yeah, fine.
Yeah, okay, so uh, there's no other comments or questions, we're going to take a motion.
Move to approve the author, and authorize the town manager to enter into a revised vantage care retirement health savings. Program adoption and agreement.
Second on that?
Second.
Thank you, uh, any other comments or questions, hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Posed. So moved.
I thank you. Then item number five is a bid waiver for a pavilion purchase for McGee Outdoor Classroom. Just coming out of uh federal money that the board of it received. I have Mr. Kugnow, just um. Give you a quick overview of this project, um, you did, since we, board of it came to you some time ago. Right, dash twenty four review, it was all approved, projects moving forward.
Okay.
This has to do with the actual pavilion itself, the structure.
Got you.
What do you, Jeff?
Good evening, folks, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Uh, for the record, Jeff Kugno, Director of Operations uh for the school district. Uh, this is a project you've heard a little bit about before, this is the the cameo piece to the project, uh, as you may recall. Um, we're developing an outdoor classroom over at McGee. Uh, it has a number of components to it, one being a a very large pavilion, uh, the rest is things like sidewalks and guardrails and and landscaping, et cetera. Um, the the picking and choosing of the pavilion became the the most interesting part of of trying to get this project in place. Um, we did have a lot of people involved in that, uh, we tried to, it got custom made or will be custom made for us, we wanted something specific. Because it's going to be out in front of uh McGee to match with the building, uh, to match with the trim, and also where most of the pavilions that you can get. Um, are either wood, uh, which most of us are used to seeing, uh, or uh some kind of wood covered, you know, laminate, things of that nature, we wanted steel. Uh, we wanted to have something that was going to be there for a while and was going to be able to be maintained and to look like an institutional item. Well, we're going forward to look at that, there were not a lot of people that were doing that size pavilion in steel. So at any rate, um, I myself and a number of people like Linda Holian and Salerso and Brian Bittigney looked at a number of things and and came up with the. Not only the firm that we thought was the one would be the best to provide this, uh, but also the actual uh pavilion size uh and uh, uh, and material. Realize this is different than constructing a building because you you order this as a product. Uh, it comes prefabricated in their shops uh and ordered by steel orders, and by the way, they are a a user of US Steel only. Um, and uh, and then it comes in a package and then you have a local contractor just install it by their engineering specs. By by the engineering specs of the actual pavilion people, so it's a little different than going out to bid for, you know, a construction contractor, so on and so forth. So we would like to ask uh for a waiver of the policies, um. It realize this project is going to be done, something that Doug and I came up with and and really is something that beforehand. Uh, not particularly for this project, but has been asked for by the Corporation Council uh is, you know, if we're going to be doing a big project on a on a school. Um, yeah, we'd like to have the contracts, at least the town would like to have the contracts go through the town, be reviewed by the Corporation Council, we appreciate that, we love the idea. And so that's why you have this in front of you today in order to get this waiver, because your pers, your policies say that anything over twenty five uh has to be bid unless in fact you guys waive it.
Okay, thank you, Jeff. Uh, folks, any questions on this? I mean, I know this came through, right, us before, and went back to planning and zoning.
I may.
Yes.
When you do the motion, also paying us, but can you just add at the end of it? This is in the best interest of the town.
I was just thinking about that, just in him.
Look at that, he's got the motions down. All right, if there's no other questions. We'll go ahead and do the motion.
Move to approve a waiver of the purchasing policies to allow the purchase of a prefabricated twenty four by thirty foot all steel gable rectangular savanna pavilion from. Fifthroom.com for the amount of fifty two thousand three hundred seventy two dollars and five cents without competitive bidding. Through the size and custom prefabrication of the project and limited availability of comparable vendors, as this is in the best interest of the town.
Thank you, second on that? Yeah, any other uh comments or questions? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
I think.
All right, so moved.
On behalf of the Board of Ed, thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Jeff.
Good, Jeff.
See you soon.
Yep.
I'm sure.
Good, Jeff. Moving along?
Yes.
Item number six, so the tax abatement modification for Newport Realty Group LLC and affiliate entities, Steel Center Farmington Avenue. This has to do with the uh change that was made. Fifty five Steel Boulevard in uh February twenty twenty three.
Mm-hmm.
Take the parking lot out and reduce the number of apartments. This is the existing uh. Abatement policy, but it's applying to the new. Um, new new plan that was approved by PNC and what's being in place right now.
Yeah, okay, I know we've uh realized this was coming, so. Um. Any questions on this, second average development, right, look at this too, right? Prove it.
Yeah.
So um.
Chris would be there, he's there.
Oh, is he around, Chris?
Yeah, next thing, I guess.
There he is.
I am very sorry about that.
It's okay, Chris.
Uh, yes, so uh what we have this evening is a uh just basically modification of the tax abatement agreement for Newport. Essentially Newport had come in initially with sixty units at about an eighty thousand square foot building on eight eighty nine. Uh, due to cost considerations, they are getting rid of the underbuilding parking. And it is going to be ground level with fifty units, so really that's the only major modification to it, and just coming back to you, essentially the terms are the same. Amount of money they're spending is the same, just going to be ten less units, uh, no underground parking. Uh, was approved by planning and zoning with new parking and um really that's all this is, but just to bring it back to you uh with the change in scope of what they're doing.
All right, yeah, thank you, Chris. Appreciate that, um, good to see the project moving along too, the other building uh going up there is great. Yeah, framing the building and got the, right, so I know it's been a soft opening for the hop house, right, but I think uh. What, the thirtieth is the official uh opening, is that it, is it the big day?
Yeah, thirtieth.
Thirtieth, Chris, yeah, okay, great, that's wonderful. Okay, uh, any other questions for Chris or anyone? Uh, if not, we're going to take a motion.
Move to approve a modification to the tax abatement agreement with Newport Realty Group LLC related to entities Newport. I know three dash nine thirteen Farmington Avenue LLC, Newport fifty five Steel Boulevard LLC. And eight sixty one Farmington Avenue LLC for the Steel Center Mixed Use Development Project based on the revised development plan. The abatement schedule for the project remain the same, the residential portion will be for five years, eighty percent in year one, seventy percent in year two. Sixty percent in year three, and fifty percent in year four, forty percent in year five. The commercial portion will be for ten years. The commercial. Ten years on the commercial of seventy percent for years one through three, sixty percent for years four through eight. Fifty percent year for years nine and ten for the town's tax abatement policy, subject to review and approval by the Corporation Council.
You second on that?
Second.
Can you recite that now from memory, Charlie?
Sure.
Okay, appreciate that, any other questions on this? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Posed, all right, so so moved, thank you.
Thank you all, I apologize for being late, but thank you very much.
Thanks, Chris. Yes, sir. Numbers have a number.
Then uh, agenda item number seven uh has to do with needing additional funding for auto parts. Um, prices have gone up, inflation, supply chain issues, we're getting to the end of the year. The fleet is a year older and cars are breaking more often, so um we need to add more money to this parts line. And fortunately, we have some money in the uh. Overtime, storm-related overtime account, so moving ten thousand from one to another.
Okay. All right, any questions on this, if not, we'll go ahead and take a motion.
Move to approve the transfers of ten thousand dollars from storm-related overtime to auto parts. To cover further expenditures within the auto parts account for the remainder of fiscal year twenty twenty three.
Second on that?
Second.
Thank you, uh, if there's no other comments or questions, all is in favor?
Aye.
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 Posed, right, so moved.
Great, thank you. Agenda item number eight has to do with asbestos-containing idle uh pile abatement at the Willard School, if you recall, we had the town meeting and appropriated money for this. Has to do with the abatement for the Willard project, HVAC project, uh, had to go back and and get numbers, but the prevailing wages ends the adjustment.
Right.
The PO, unless uh Doug Solak is here, do you have any questions?
Okay, hey, Doug. Um, no, I, we, yeah, no, we we just, we just discussed this the other day, so a couple of meetings ago, a couple of minutes ago, so uh. We're, I think we're all good, right, we're good, yeah, you know, okay, go ahead and take a motion.
Move to utilize state con, of Connecticut, DAS contract number. Two zero PSX zero one five four and approve the estimate from Haz Proz Incorporated of West Hartford, Connecticut. In the amount of one hundred sixty one thousand sixty two dollars, which includes a ten percent project contingency. And prevailing wage for abatement of asbestos-containing floor tile and mastic along with. Air clearance monitoring associated with the classroom ventilator replacements at Willard School in conjunction with the HVAC part.
Second on that?
Second.
Uh, if there's no other comments or questions, uh, we'll go ahead and vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed. So moved.
Good evening, everyone, thank, thank you very much, thank you.
Thanks, Doug.
Next three agenda items up on Public Works, I see Mr. Hearn there, first one has to do with traffic guidelines, street line, painting bid award. I'll just tell it, go over to you, Mike.
Okay, thanks, um, good evening all, we would like, hello, um. The these will be easy ones, guys, I I swear.
Oh, thank goodness, yes, appreciate that.
Should they all say?
Yeah, yeah, right.
Now I got myself in trouble, I know.
Yeah, that's, that's a problem, you know, it's a problem now, right, yeah.
I know, I know, I could feel it coming, um.
We're good.
So in connection with our paving projects around town and also to refresh our faded pavement markings, you know, double yellows and edge lines and even parking lot lines. Um, we'd like to use the CROG uh annual bid, it's contract number seven four three, that's competitively bid by the CROG. And it has everything you'd ever want to do and to paint on the roads and from epoxy resin, waterborne paint, oil-based paint and hot-applied waterborne paint. With all kinds of pavement symbols, line striping, double yellows and all that, so we'd like to use that, it's a unit price contract. And we've been using it and we actually use it on the town hall entry drive, so as you drive out of here, you can look at what that paid for last year, so we'd like to use that contract.
Okay. Any questions for Mike?
Nope.
All right, hearing none, we'll go ahead and take a motion.
Move to authorize the town manager to enter into a unit price contract to purchase street line painting services. Utilizing CROG contract number seven four three with the most cost-effective and qualified contractor.
Second on that?
Second.
Thank you, if there's no further comments or questions, we'll go ahead and vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Posed, all right, so moved.
Thank you. Then item number ten, we have seen a lot of work getting done on roads.
Oh, my goodness, yes.
Projects and all that, so Mike needs more money. Purchasing catch basin materials, what to you, Mike?
Actually, I don't need more money, I just need permission to use it.
Ah, there you go.
Yeah, we have the accounts and and I think this is the first time in my my uh, my time here that we've gone over forty thousand dollars. For catch basin tops and sumps and all that, and I think you're just showing that the highway department is actually, they're prepping earlier this year, we're doing more shorter roads, which end up actually. Um, having more catch bases and drainage structures as compared to some of the longer roads, which is sort of a a, it counterintuitive, but it's actually true. So we're almost over forty thousand dollars, which was the previously approved approved cap that you approved and in two thousand twenty one. We're using a DAS contract, we typically buy from United Concrete, um, it's one of the two vendors on this state bid contract. So we'd like to buy more catch basin so the guys can keep prepping the roads and so we've worked, I worked with Kevin Delaney and Arash to um. Modify this approval to use uncommitted funds and we have three accounts as identified in your package there, we have enough money, we just need to um. Use the uncommitted funds um uh that are available for use.
Okay. Questions for Mike? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and take a motion.
Move to utilize the State of Connecticut Department of Administration Service. Contract two zero PSX zero one three seven to purchase concrete catch basin materials and related items. Using uncommitted funds either in the bonded road improvement account. Grant road improvement account or road and bridge improvement account as determined by Public Works and Finance over the life of this contract.
Second on that?
Second.
Uh, any other comments and questions, oh, look at that, here we are. Hearing none, uh. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed, all right, so moved. Yeah, we have a special guest joining us, yeah. Yes, oh, yes, of course.
Well, Mike, can you?
My mic.
Mike with the mic.
Mike, then they ask, talk to the mic for Mike.
So, um, I know there's a lot of road construction, I've had a few phone calls. You can't make them happy one way or the other, but in any event, um, I believe it's Porter's Pass that is.
It's still.
Taking a little longer and it's, the dust is coming up back, is that our project here or is that the state?
It is a combination, yeah, it, yeah, it's it's a state-funded project that we had to bid out, we got money through the lotsit program, we got a five million dollars. So it's being done by Tilcon and their subcontractors and Porter's Pass is a total reconstruction. So we've been getting calls as well, Donna, and um.
Okay.
In particular, the vibratory roller, which was out there today, was shaking some some residents' houses, so uh they were calling up. Um, they're compacting the road base, so right now is probably one of the worst times for those residents who are right near the road. Once it gets compacted and the paving starts, that will, that will go away, but there will be more disruption before the road is actually um paved and and drivable. So what what have you been hearing?
Well, is there anything, well, I heard rocks on my lawn, the dust, everything's dirty, isn't there a way that we can. Put water down in between to keep some of that, and it is dusty, I I mean, there's no question. I went down that road and actually halfway and I turned around, I felt like my front end was going to come off.
I try and stay off of it, yeah.
Yeah, I don't go, I I'll I'll be honest with you, I like avoid it, but I, this gentleman lives on that street, so it's kind of hard to avoid. So I was just wondering if there was anything that we can do, and I'm not looking to add cost to this project, but you know, I had to, I told him that I would inquire. When do we anticipate finishing that, maybe if there's like an end date roughly that we can share with the general public?
Um, we have, we get two week look aheads from the contractors, if you want, we can start posting on the website. Well, maybe a summarized version because it's, it shows the subs and all that, the other thing too is, uh, Paganelly, who's um Tilcon sub. Agreed to bring a water truck, a tanker truck out there for more dust control. And I'll talk to Jim Horrible tomorrow, he's project manager on this, so um, and we'll see if we can get them out there, especially since it's kind of, it's been so dry. I mean, we haven't had any rain, so we had, we have had some complaints about that, and I mean, you can put calcium chloride down, but um, it's um. I think in this case, maybe a little more spraying of the water for the, for the local residents may help, so we'll, we'll, we'll look into that tomorrow.
I thank you very much, he will be very happy and you've just made me happy, thank you.
We'll, we'll see.
Yeah, right.
Mike, why, why did they go to such extremes on that road, was there no base or are they putting in sewers?
Uh, no, the the state, we actually were going to do a mill and overlay on that. And the state came back after they saw the traffic distribution, which was a lot of heavy trucks. That road didn't have enough pavement for their twenty year service life. So that road, um, we, like I said, we had, and that kind of was a budget buster, and that's why we had to go back to the CROG for more money, one of the reasons. Um, is that they want a full, complete ripoff and reconstruct that road, and it was, it was, it was sort of shot anyway, that was probably one of the worst roads, one of the wor- worst sections we had in that whole project. So um, it was a combination of the state's pavement management unit. Wanting the design to be twenty years, they wanted absolutely service life of twenty years with a very um. Heavy distribution of uh truck traffic, so that's kind of the reason why. So that's kind of the reason why, why it went to a, you know, the full ripoff and repave approach. And they also have to replace some of the base material too. I think that was a little, uh, it wasn't as good as up in Deming and Christian Lane.
Thank you.
If that answers the question. Yeah.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I, I, I mean, I think we knew that road was, I mean, it's been a mess for years. So.
Needed to be.
Needed it. I, I know it's, uh, uh, you know, a little bit of a problem for folks. But, but on, on the positive note, Farmington Avenue, I, I, I can't believe how fast they did that and paved it and, and striped it. I mean, they were, that was what, three weeks from the, they already started milling?
Doing it overnight.
Yeah, I mean.
Pretty sure twenty four.
Goodness for that getting done quickly, right?
Could hear him.
Yeah, right. Yeah. But, um, but, but they did a great job. And I know this one's much more extensive. So, but, you know, yeah, if you could put that out there, Mike, just tell people, you know, maybe just a, a couple of lines too about how extensive that had to be. And I mean, really, everybody has complained about Porter's Pass for years, what a mess it is. The road was.
Anyway, we'll, we'll do.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
So what are we on?
Item number eleven, the extension of the tree removal services. Last one for you, Mike.
Yes. Distinctive Tree won a publicly bid contract in March of two thousand twenty one. And as part of that, we had in a, a condition of up to two, two year extensions on the contract if the terms are mutually agreeable between us and, uh, and distinctive. We started out with them. We, we asked them what were their, were their terms? They started out with a two year extension with a fifteen percent bump in their unit rates. Arush asked us to go back and forth a little bit. We did. We, um, at the end of the day, they came down to three percent per year for the next two years. Uh, Highway is very happy with their production and we typically, I think the reason why they, um, give us a slightly better rate than some other communities is we usually book them for a week. We don't have them come in for a day and leave. So it's sort of a good situation where they get a nice stream of work. We get a lot of production, especially with the bigger trees. We don't have to, you know, if they have to come back the next day, we can start on one end and keep going. So, uh, we'd like to extend the contract another two years with two three year extensions. Uh, I'm sorry, two, three percent extensions or three percent increases for the next two years in their unit rates.
All right. Uh, questions for Mike?
No.
Hearing none. We'll go ahead and take a motion on that, Charlie.
Move to extend contract number twenty twenty one dash seventeen for tree removal services with the distinctive gardens and tree care of South Windsor, Connecticut for two additional years with a three percent increase per year beginning on May first, twenty twenty three and ending on April thirtieth, twenty twenty five. Funding will come from established line item accounts within the relevant fiscal year department budgets.
Take a second on that.
Second.
Uh, any other comments or questions on this? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, so moved.
Thank you. Thank you, Mike. Have a good night.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Aye.
The night on number twelve is a section eight dash twenty four review. Um, the owners of five fifteen, five fifty four bowling turnpike associates own five fifty four bowling turnpike. It's the ABC Supply company. Yes, selling it to their tenant. But, uh, the property has three drainage pipes that either located or discharged under the town of Berlin property. All six of four bowling turnpike costing an easement, but before we give an easement, this needs to go to planning and zoning for an eight dash twenty four review.
Okay. All right, pretty simple. Any questions? Now we'll go and take a motion.
Move to refer to the planning and zoning commission for a section eight dash twenty four review of an easement from the town for three drainage pipes coming out of, out from five twenty two and five fifty four Berlin turnpike onto the town of Berlin Water Control Property, M B L ten dash one dash eighty three dash sixteen, six oh four Berlin turnpike.
Second on that.
Second.
Thank you. If there's no other comments or questions, we'll go ahead and vote on the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, so moved.
Thank you. Last agenda, number thirteen.
Amazing.
This one is, uh, this time of the year, we get proposals for the Neighborhood Assistance Act, tax credit program. No cost to the town, no cost to the people applying. You need to find companies that would give them the grant and they get tax credits in return. There are four proposals this year, from Prudence Crandall. Center, they, every year they apply and get something and can send them congregational church. Uh, this year we also have the presence of the Worthington Meeting House applying for a grant. That's a long shot, but they want to try.
Yeah, it's a shot.
And but today's purpose is for you to requesting to schedule a public hearing. Before we do anything, have the next meeting June sixth, twenty twenty two at seven P M.
Okay. So we'll go ahead and take a motion on that.
Move to support proposals from the Prudence Crandall Center, the Kensington Congregational Church, and the Friends of Worthington Region Meeting House Incorporated for the twenty twenty three Connecticut Neighborhood Assistance Act tax credit program and approve the setting of a public hearing for Tuesday, June sixth, twenty twenty three at seven P M. We discussed the proposals from Prudence Crandall Center, the Kensington Congregational Church for the twenty twenty three Connecticut N A A Tax Credit Program and to solicit citizens.
Second on that.
Second.
Uh, so it's just, uh, any other questions on this? Just for a public hearing? I feel more time to discuss it.
If you're seeing Worthington as well.
So. Uh, well, we're all good? The motion? We're good. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, so moved. And there's, that's just that second motion there. Small motion.
To designate Russian Jerika Jima Town Manager to manage as liaison for the town of Berlin to handle all neighborhood assistance matters.
Could trash that name.
Second on that?
Second.
Okay.
Private list.
Any other questions? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Alright, so moved.
Alright.
So moved. That's it?
That's it.
Oh, come on.
I just got here.
Now, I know there's still some more stuff here.
There's a couple of appointments.
Uh, yeah, some appointments. Where are we at here now? Where are, where's?
Yes. Yes.
Where are the?
Whoever organized the, yeah, it's all.
This week is. Where are they?
Creative. It's not like. They both are the last.
This?
Yeah, I think it's, yeah. No.
No? This one?
The actual.
Oh, my gosh.
You know, where it's.
That was.
That last motion? The last item?
Yep.
They stapled to the back of that?
Yeah.
This is a public hearing before.
Alright.
That's what I was saying. Been back to back.
They're in the back. Way in the back. Yeah, to do that.
That is a public hearing.
Oh, after the public hearing.
Probably better for the tree.
It's attached to the public hearing.
Oh, my goodness gracious. Okay, hold on.
You find the public hearing, it starts right after that.
Right.
I saw it at one point. I did see it. I remember seeing it. There it is.
Wow. It's all the, it's called the staples that happen.
Got it, got it. See it. There we are. Hey, look at that.
And I guess there's one by itself. Yeah.
Yes, that right. We had that one by itself. That was here. Yes.
Got emailed.
Um, you know, Kay, it doesn't take much to confuse us, okay?
There's learning curves going on in my life.
What's?
That's a nice way of.
I like that. That's good, right?
Why, it's more of a circle.
What's, uh, alright, so, alright, so we got to start with the, uh, library board, right? I guess is number one for the. Yeah, let me just get, that's serious. Alright, there we go. Okay.
Where did you find?
Okay, and that's the only, uh.
I do.
Okay, so.
Here.
We'll go ahead and, uh, uh, open up the nominations, take a nomination on this.
I nominate Kevin Wilhelm for the library board.
Alright, thank you. Any other nominations? Hearing none. Oh, uh, we'll close, we'll close the nominations and then all those in favor of Kevin?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Alright, so moved. Alright, so Kevin's good. And what do we got next?
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't get that page.
Veterans Commission. Alright, so we'll, we'll get an open, uh, uh, nominations on this.
Yeah, I see. I didn't get any of that. Not just me, they're looking.
So we'd like to nominate Adam Revore.
I got it online, but I. No, I don't. Yeah, this is the one that it was attached to, right?
We could share.
We'll share. It's not a big deal. I saw him online, but I, I don't know what happened. I got one, if that's right.
That was the, okay, one for veterans, correct?
Yes, yes.
Who left a veteran?
Yeah, who, who left a veteran?
Left a veteran.
Unfortunately, um, eighteen point. Uh, Robert.
Oh, right, okay. I think I remember.
Yep.
Oh, yes, okay. Let's.
I mean, I have one page. I have this long.
I have nominated Adam Revore.
Okay. Uh, are there any another, any other nominations? Hearing none. We'll close the nominations. All those in favor of Adam? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, welcome Adam to our Veterans Commission.
Thank you for your service.
Absolutely. Alright, we got Z B A next.
You can, B B A or youth services.
Okay, either one. The, uh, where's these?
Services, uh, has.
Oh, right here.
One in there and then one was given.
What is that now?
There's one extra I have and then.
There's two, right? For youth services?
One is a youth and one is a service.
Gotcha. Okay. Alright, so we'll do.
There's two spots, I think, aren't there?
Right. These are two spots, right? For the youth services. There's two, right?
Perfect. That's great. It's nice to see that.
There it is. There it is there. Look at that. It's on the back of that page. I remember. We got it. We got it. We got it. Alright, so. Let's. Not too bad though.
Little red.
Actually, it's not too bad during this agenda tonight, right? Not bad.
Let's get this over with.
Alright, we don't want to extend it though. Let, let's, so, let's go with, uh,
Charlie talks.
Let's nominate, uh, we'll take a nomination for the Youth Advisory Board.
So this would be the youth vacancy. Nathan?
Nathan, yep.
Jackson. Jackson.
So we nominate Nathan.
Oh, yeah. So I'm nominating Nathan to Jackson for the Youth Advisory Board as the, um, youth vacancy.
Great. Uh, any other nominations for this?
No.
Hearing none? Okay, we'll close the nominations. All, all those in favor of Nathan? Aye?
Aye.
Alright, any opposed? Alright, so welcome Nathan.
Just one here.
Now, what do we got? You got one more here, right? For the Youth Services Advisory Board Service.
Nicole Tierney.
Yeah, thank you for that nomination. Any other nominations? Hearing none, we'll close the nominations. All those in favor of Nicole?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, so moved. Welcome Nicole. And we get the Z B A, right? The Z B A, what happened to that little Z B A guy? I saw it somewhere.
It's on the back.
Michael.
Michael.
Mike Simonetta.
Yes.
Board of Appeals.
Alright, thank you. Any other nominations for that opening? Hearing none, we'll close the nominations. All them, all those in favor of Mike?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, so moved. Welcome Mike. Okay, oof, alright.
Get it.
We got through it. That's amazing.
I've done, yeah.
Yeah.
We're ready for the very short call managers.
Yes, extremely short.
We have a lot of time. Nobody listening.
Very briefly, um, three items. One, just to give you a heads up, we are getting close to wrapping up the PD pension plan document.
Oh, that's great.
Union leadership, Kevin, Paula, and, uh, attorney has been, have been working on this. Lot of back and forth, but I think it's getting to a point that, uh, it should be ready for your, um, review first.
Yep.
Plan is to try and get it to you and the union leadership, union, the same leadership only.
Yeah, they know, right? They've been looking at it.
Absolutely. At heart group too. I'll send it out to them because they helped out the, the, putting the basic parameters together.
That's great.
Um, so let's, goal is to get that, your first meeting. And then, um, the second meeting, we will come back to you because the union needs to vote on it.
Right.
Before, uh, we bring it to you and then you will take action at that time.
Okay.
Um, the plan is to then by June thirtieth, begin to move forward with it by getting evaluations of the, um, amounts that people have in their D C plan. And actuaries will run, run numbers and say, this is how much you will have to contribute to get to the D B plan.
Okay.
Not be any different from, you know, the market has changed, but.
Right.
Total surprise.
Right.
Give them a sixty day window. Decide whether they want to go to the D B plan or stay in the D C plan. Remember that we given that option for the, uh, first time. And then.
Big decision?
Depending on what groups join, how many individuals join, you, at that point, based on the market performance and the individual assets. Money, they know how much the town, some city is going to be. It's a non issue we are amortizing that over a ten year period.
Okay.
To, uh, that's what the board of finance decide to do.
Right, right. Yeah, right. Yeah, we changed that. Yeah, that's good.
This is just a heads up.
Good.
I think we're almost there. Just probably have another conference call and then finalize the document and then get it to you.
Right?
Alright.
Yeah, thank you. It's great.
Want to let you know, you all have something like this.
Yes.
You know?
Yes.
Are doing. I've done that kid. I don't know whether you have ever done it in this town hall a long time ago, maybe? They're doing a staff recognition. As to me, they're from the most important, um, you know, assets in the town. Keep everything going here. We want to do a staff recognition. We're actually doing, uh, twelve to two. We are closing town hall. They are informing everyone, it's going to be closed. It's going to be the newspaper, on the website, rolling bars, whatever. The bars, I don't, the bars, Facebook page, Berlin Citizen. And, um, two hours and lunch and it'll be in Timbaland Golf Course. Then all of you invited, if you do join, donate if you can come. We'll appreciate it. I think. This year will be a lot of people because we have never done it. So we're going to recognize people who have served for five, ten, fifteen, twenty five, thirty, thirty five, and days of forty.
Wow.
That's great.
Yeah.
Yes.
So, um, but beginning next year, our goal is to just do, um, those who need those. You know, so I'd be less than, yeah, few people will be there, but I think it's important that the, they thank you and, uh.
Yeah, that's great.
Service to the town.
Excellent.
And then the last one is the, you have this nice thick package that you'll CD with you.
Yes.
Um, if you have any comments, questions, please give them to Maureen before June fifteenth, twenty twenty three. That's when planning.
Okay.
For the public here.
Oh, okay, okay.
For what day?
June fifteenth.
Okay.
It will be on the agenda next meeting as well because you have to.
We have to.
Accept it.
Yeah, accept it, right? Yeah. Okay.
Feel free to read. It's, it's a great plan. It's color coordinated very nicely there. So depending on the section you want to look, you can just flip and go through it. I would, if you, uh, press for time, there's a lot of history and background and how we get there. I would focus on the action items and implementation plan, which is pretty darn good, very extensive. You can look at that. That'll be great.
Yeah, that's great.
And, and, you know, Maureen and And, and, you know, Maureen and the Mahonia and everybody put in a lot of time of planning and joining.
It's a lot, it's a lot.
It's a lot.
Better than the previous ones.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, they did a nice job on it this.
I thought it was.
Yeah, they did a nice job, yeah.
They did a good job. Maureen was great with it. And then the consultants that we used, Francisco was very good with guiding us and you know, helping point us in the right direction. And so it was, it was a great experience, shall I say. But I really do like the way the format came out as well. And again, the action items are towards the back, so if you look at that, kind of says what we wanna do over the ten years and how and why.
Great, that's good. Alright, we'll, we'll review that.
It's important, look at it, there could be certain action items assigned to, from a few.
Right. Huh?
Seriously.
What?
I can't hear you.
We'll do our homework.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, there's static on my line.
More, more to do?
Do as a board, town, the council.
Is there a little something in the pay, extra in the paycheck for that? Of course, okay, I'm just making sure.
Ten percent.
Ten percent. Percent of zero is what? Still zero, can't get anything out of it, that's okay.
Mike, to you.
Alright, so our special committee reports, I don't think we've had any, correct?
No.
Alright, so town, council communications, where are we at? Anybody? I have one thing, I'll let you guys speak first. Yeah, anybody?
It is National Peace Officers Day.
Oh, yes.
Thank all of our peace officers out there for everything that they do every single day. Appreciate it.
Absolutely. And, you know, we had the nice ceremony the other day for the awards for the town officers and the stuff that they have done.
Oh, I could get to that.
Very, very dedicated and above and beyond the call of duty.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, they, you know, very fortunate to have PD.
Yep.
Like that, so.
Congratulations, our new lieutenant, excuse me, deputy, deputy chief.
Deputy chief, yes, yes.
Congratulations again, Drew.
Yep.
Awesome.
Drew, he had a nice ceremony, too.
That was very nice. We even had the A G here.
Yeah, we had the A G coming. That was, that was an interesting guest to show up. That's great.
Must have been a camera.
Oh, alright, alright. They wanna go down that road, so let's not go down it. Yeah, so no, that's good. I, I just wanna, if we could, I just have a question and perhaps action would just be, I, I know many of the meetings, boards and commissions are recorded, like on Zoom, some are not. I would like to do them all. Especially, you know, there's some specific ones that probably we should do. But I don't know what kind of effort that would take, but we would have to do it by ordinance, I believe. So I, I wonder if we could just start that discussion. Kate, don't flip out.
She's retiring.
Yeah, she's, alright, I gotta retire, I'm sorry, time to go.
Saw the look.
Yeah, I know, I saw it, too. I saw the look, I know, scared me, but, so. So, but what, what I would like to do, and there may be some that are more important than others, so we'll put that qualifier in there, but I just wanna start to discuss, you know, look at, I know some do it already, you know, like public building does it, right, and what? So, but, and, and I think we'd have to do an ordinance to.
Many of them should be all.
Yeah.
It depends upon, a commission of aging does it.
Right.
They're a small commission.
Right.
But they do it because of us senior candidates.
Right.
So, they do do that. And then you have these larger ones, which is really probably really appropriate, and that is the, of course, planning, zoning, in the wetlands, the park and recs, we of course do it, you know, those are probably, and public buildings.
Public building does that, right? Board of Finance, of course, yeah.
Ones that are larger than.
Yeah. Yeah, and so just maybe we'll look at that list and see if there's others we should add. I don't, I mean. No, probably not all of them. I'm just throwing that out there, but, yeah.
That was my. That commission might be.
I mean, just in all, to, you know, to be as transparent as possible to, to our residents that can't make it to meetings, and we can see which ones we think are, you know, more, maybe more important to, to do that on. Yeah.
Yeah.
What do you think?
I was gonna add, so doing Zoom meetings, the, I would call it the burden, the responsibility falls.
The note taken.
Staff person.
Separate, yeah.
Because the board commission members show up.
Right.
Then they're just eating in. So, we could have, start the conversation that way with, I mean, most of them work for the town.
Yeah.
And I tell them that this is the direction that the council would like to go.
Yeah.
And they all have the equipment, the laptops, rooms are wired, it's a matter of plugging it in and scheduling the meeting.
Okay.
So, but we might have to give some training to some folks.
Right.
Who have never done.
Right, sure, understood.
It's not that complicated. Once you set it up, we have some instructions.
Sure.
But they, they probably want to get their board chairs and all on.
Yeah, yeah.
So let me ask you, cause I was doing this remotely this evening. Could hear Jeff really well, could hear you guys well. What mics are you two using? Those ones there in front of you?
It's not the mic, we are soft spoken.
I don't think.
No, no, really. I, I've been told that.
Because I couldn't hear either one of you guys.
You, you all have this better pin.
Yeah.
Maybe we should switch.
Maybe, yeah, I, cause I couldn't hear Kate, no, no, it's, it's not, I just noticed it because I usually don't Zoom.
That's true.
Tonight I zoomed. I'm like, why can't I hear everybody except you two?
And it's.
That was weird.
Time somebody sits here because they end up running around.
I just, now I'm looking, I'm like, oh, different mics, so that's probably what it is. Right, right, we used to have those.
Goose neck mics.
Yeah, we, we have those up in Hartford.
They're still fine. Just kidding.
We can get a couple of more.
Just get a couple more of these, I think that would be.
You know what was interesting? I think it was the Board of Finance meeting, I called in that day, cause I don't know, I was driving, I don't know why I didn't do Zoom, but it was just easier to call in. It was crystal clear on, on the call in number, and not the Zoom, huh? I don't know where they were, that was the, the last meeting they did after the referendum? The call in number, where were they with the Board of Ed, maybe? They were in the Board of Ed room. Honestly, and the call in was perfect.
Really?
Yeah, loud and perfect and clear. I, I just happened to use the call in number, it was easier that day, but
I would.
I don't know what the difference would be, but.
Jeff was very crisp.
What?
Could hear you.
Zoom only.
Huh?
That meeting was Zoom only.
Oh, was that Zoom only, that one they did? So is that why the call in number was clearer, too, or what?
Yeah, I think it's clear because everything is directly into the Zoom.
Oh, I got you, okay, cause I was shocked how clear it was. I haven't had that experience necessarily in Zoom.
It's a thought. We can make all of them Zoom only.
I'd love to see your face.
No, we just love to be here.
Jeff's like, yeah.
There's just too much for human interaction we would miss. We don't like that. Or maybe we do.
I could have been right home and finished from there.
Yeah, I know.
Guys, for the last three. I even saw Charlie twice today.
Can we, can we put, so what do we do? Can we get just a quick meeting for the ordinance committee? And that's, Jeff, that's the proper place, I guess, right, to, to do an ordinance to include others and maybe include who already does it in there, or I don't know, we'll, we'll let the attorneys write something up after we talk about it a little bit? And that's all, I think that's all we would have on the agenda, should be relatively quick. What are we, what are, I don't know, what are we thinking?
What if happened to the A T Vs?
Well, yes, but, but what has happened to the A T Vs? That's a good point.
This is the but I followed up with the folks.
Yes.
The venture I wrote.
Yes.
We're working with the neighbors to come up with the language, give us some time.
Oh, nice. Oh, I'm happy to hear that.
Sent an email to Roman and got back to me and said, you know, thank you for following up.
Oh, good.
Contacting the neighbors.
Wow. Excellent.
And.
Good.
I, I think he knows the ball is in the air.
Good.
We have, I gave them all the draft language.
Okay, good, okay. Good. No, that's positive, that's excellent.
So the tricky part is.
Yeah.
They all have to agree now, whatever.
Well, we'll see.
Send us.
Right, yeah. Alright, we'll let them work on it. That's okay, though, yeah. That's, that's good. I think that's a good development. So, I don't know if I wanna wait for that one, that might be a while. Okay, so, I don't know, what are we thinking? Yeah, we could, yeah, cause that's right, referendum is next Tuesday, right, so, do I do it after that? Just a quick, a quick me, ordinance? Can you do it, Jeff? Yeah. I mean, just that one item, I don't, I don't think that's gonna take long. The referendum is the twenty-third, so let's, we don't wanna do the twenty-third, that's the referendum, so. What do you wanna do?
Labor Day, some of the weekend. In the previous, we've done them before the council meeting.
Oh.
We're only gonna have the one, why don't we do it on?
Maybe we could do.
The next one's the sixth.
The sixth? We do it on the sixth?
We just do it then?
We could do that.
To be here anyway, so we just get here a little earlier.
I'll be full.
Yeah, we could do that. Yeah, that's not gonna take that long.
I won't be wrong, but I can zoom.
Oh, 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 can, can you?
Relax.
Alright. Oh, yeah, yeah, good for you.
I'll be in Hartford chained to a desk. Day, day before season's over.
A bed, oh, maybe that's a bed.
It's alright, I can, I, tonight worked out well. I just go in another room, but I'm not on ordinance, I don't think.
Oh, okay, you're right.
I'm okay, I'm here for council.
Yeah, okay, so it's Donna, it's Donna, and yourself, and, and, okay, so, yeah, alright, so let's, we can just do that on the sixth, that's fine. Yeah, alright, so we'll, we'll do it on the sixth, it's. Six at six, let's do that. Yeah, six at six, huh?
Back and forth.
Six, six. Oh, boy, that's not a good.
I think we gotta do it. We just have to do it.
That's a bad date, you know that, right? That's not six, the three sixes, that's not a good thing.
My God.